Good morning and welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, December twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen. This is a regular meeting of Commissioners Court. All members of the Court are present and the meeting is called to order. Whoever want to please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Kirkendall followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the great privilege and honor of representing the citizens of Harden County. Lord, we do pause this morning and thank you for Shirley and Ed, Lord, as they have given many years to Harden County in service. We pray a blessing upon their retirement, God, a blessing upon their family and their health and their wealth, Lord. Father, we thank you, Lord, as we pause to celebrate Christmas, the birth of Jesus Christ. And, Lord, we just ask today that you'd be with us, give us wisdom, Lord, give us patience in all that we do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number three, Glenda Austin, county clerk, approval of minutes of prior meetings. Good morning, Ms. Austin.
Good morning. There will be a regular meeting on December the twelfth of two thousand sixteen.
So moved, second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, Deborah McWilliams, county treasurer, presentation and approval of registered claims to be canceled by the Court. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking that the Court release me of the liability of one million, one hundred ten thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and five cents. This is the total of the county's bills and payroll expenses that were presented at the December twelfth Commissioners Court.
So moved, second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, Deborah McWilliams, presentation and approval of cash statement.
In general checking account, we have one million, one hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and sixteen cents. In our investment account at Wells Fargo, we have four million, eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. In our Texpool account, we have one million, twelve thousand, sixty-five dollars and twenty-four cents for a total cash funds of six million, nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty-two cents.
Move with the cash statement, second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Item number six, Angela Gore, county auditor, payment of county bills. And we have Ms. McKenney sitting in this morning for Ms. Gore. Good morning, Candace.
Good morning. Pre-approved expenditures for December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, were one hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars and eighty-three cents. The pre-approved expenditures for December twentieth, two thousand sixteen, were twenty-two thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and three cents. And today, December twenty-seventh, the expenditures for Commissioners Court are one hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-nine cents, making the total expenditures and transfers for two hundred and ninety-four thousand, twenty-seven dollars, fifteen cents. The total transfer for December fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, payroll was twenty-four thousand, five hundred four dollars and fifty-five cents. Total transfer for December twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, payroll was five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents.
Move pay the county bills? Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McKenney. Item number seven, adoption of resolution number thirty-seven dash sixteen, recognizing Ed Kane for twenty years of dedicated service to the citizens of Harden County as our sheriff and wishing him well on his retirement. This is a bittersweet moment today that we recognize our sheriff for twenty years of service and I'm going to ask Commissioner Pelt to read the resolution before we pass it.
Thank you, Judge. It is my honor and privilege to read this resolution. Ed and I came into office the same year and I think he would agree that Harden County is a different place today than it was when we came in office. Harden County was changing from a rural county to a suburban county with all the problems that go along with it, plus a few that were created by the county itself. And I think these challenges have been met. Harden County did modernize. They prepared for the future. We have a great court. We had a great court. And I think Harden County is ready to proceed forward. And Ed, we wish you the best. Whereas Sheriff Ed Kane has devoted the past thirty years of his life to the service of the people of Harden County, Texas, with great pride, professionalism, and integrity. And whereas Sheriff Ed J. Kane served as a Texas Department of Public Safety Highway Patrol trooper stationed in Harden County for ten years, then he served as Sheriff of Harden County for twenty years and is the longest-serving sheriff in Harden County history. Whereas Sheriff Ed J. Kane was driven by strong and sincere motivation to better the lives of Harden County citizens, to protect those who do not protect themselves, and make a positive difference in the world. And whereas Sheriff Ed J. Kane faithfully served Harden County throughout his career in law enforcement, notwithstanding the inherent risk and danger of the job, all whilst being a good husband and father, and has undeniably made a positive impact in both areas of his life, personal and professional. And whereas Sheriff Ed J. Kane, through determination and commitment to excellence, has earned the respect and admiration of his colleagues and the citizens of Harden County. And whereas Sheriff Ed J. Kane is hereby recognized for his strong, effective leadership and dedication to the citizens of Harden County, Texas, and will be missed by his friends, colleagues, and family at the Harden County Courthouse. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Harden County, Texas, does hereby honor and commend Sheriff Ed J. Kane for his distinguished service to the citizens of Harden County and wishes him well in his retirement. Signed this twenty-seventh day of December, two thousand sixteen, Judge Wayne McDaniel, county judge, Commissioner L. W. Cooper, Jr., Commissioner Chris Kirkendall, Commissioner Ken Pelt, Commissioner Alvin Roberts. Let's wish you the best.
Thank you, Mr. Pelt. With that, I move that we adopt resolution number thirty-seven dash sixteen.
Second.
A motion by the Chair and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Sheriff, it's been a pleasure to serve with you and for you. Wish you the very best in your retirement. We got you this nice engraved watch, I mean, keychain. I think Sonny's got one for you. And of course, your certificate, twenty years of service to Harden County. And then your county flag with the new county seal on it.
That's great.
Debbie had these made up for you just in time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, we wish you the very best.
Well, again, I would just like to thank a good Lord first of all, and then the people of this county for allowing me to serve as their sheriff for twenty years. What an honor and a privilege it's been. And Commissioner, you're so correct in that we have had an outstanding court, outstanding department head and elected officials to work with. I've been to a lot of sheriff conferences and outings with sheriffs where they sit around and talk about how much they hate the county judge and their court and the people they have to work with. I've never said that, never, never had a reason to say that. We've, we've had outstanding courts. Sure, we didn't agree on everything, but if we agreed on everything, it'd be a dull county, so it can't work that way. And I really, really thank y'all, appreciate it. Of course, Kane and I served the longest together and what a pleasure that's been as well. And of course, I've worked with Alvin and Wayne, Alvin, and that's been great. You've been a great Commissioner to us as well, Kirkendall, appreciate you. And these folks back here, and these three ladies, I couldn't have done it without them. I'll miss that the most.
Item number eight, adoption of resolution number thirty-eight dash sixteen, recognizing Shirley Stevens for thirty-one years and ten months of dedicated service to the citizens of Harden County, serving over eighteen years as our tax assessor-collector, and wishing her well on her retirement. Judge Brewer, if you could come up, Judge Brewer's going to read the resolution before we adopt it.
I'll just stand over there on the side.
Will be fine.
I'm not speaking in public. My wife always told me, don't speak in public because I get my words all messed up and I sound like old Kenny Head Hitler. I think it was because I done so well on my twelfth night before Christmas.
That's what.
She asked me to do this. So I started wearing a Santa Claus suit. But anyway, I've known Shirley my whole life, fifty years. And she is a great lady. I've been to church with her. You know, she sits on one side of the church and I sit on the other side of the church. And every now and then we wave at each other and the preacher probably thinks we're real spiritual, but we're your lady. She is a great lady, a true lady, and a friend of mine. And I really appreciate Shirley. And I'd like to read this resolution. Whereas Shirley Stevens has devoted the past thirty-one years and twelve months of her life to service other people of Harden County, Texas, with great pride, professionalism, and style. And whereas Shirley Stevens dedicated her talents and pledged her services as a deputy clerk in the tax assessor-collector's office, then became elected tax assessor-collector where she served in the capacity for over eighteen years and consistently exceeded expectations. And whereas Shirley Stevens, through determination, commitment, and sense of duty to excellence, and earned the respect and admiration of her colleagues and the citizens of Harden County. And whereas Shirley Stevens is a woman of honesty and integrity and in all aspects of her life, especially when it comes to serving the citizens of Harden County. Whereas Shirley Stevens is recognized for her unselfish, outstanding devotion to the common good and well-being of the citizens of Harden County, Texas, and will be dearly missed by her friends, coworkers, and family at the Harden County Courthouse. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Harden County, Texas, does hereby honor and commend Shirley Stevens for her dedicated service as a valuable employee and elected official of Harden County and wishes her the best in her retirement. Signed this twenty-seventh day of December, two thousand sixteen, Judge Wayne McDaniel, Commissioner L. W. Cooper, Jr., Commissioner Chris Kirkendall, Commissioner Ken Pelt, and Commissioner Alvin Roberts.
With that, I move that we adopt resolution number thirty-eight dash sixteen, recognizing Shirley Stevens for thirty-one years and ten months of dedicated service to the citizens of Harden County.
Second.
Have a motion by the Chair and a second by Commissioner Pelt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Shirley, I have some things here for you. Seen a lot of them handed out before, that's your keychain. And then your certificate of thirty-one years' service to Harden County. And then you also have a new flag with the new seal on it that Debbie has specially made up for you. We certainly appreciate all your time here. I've enjoyed serving with you the past two years. Of course, I served with you before that, but I didn't get to work as closely with you. But I did the last two years and it's been a good learning experience for me. I learned quite a bit from you and I appreciate that and I've enjoyed working with you. And I know all of these ladies that are here to support you today have enjoyed working with you as well. And wish you the very best in your retirement.
I do. I would like to say it has been my pleasure to serve the citizens of Harden County as their tax assessor-collector for the past eighteen years. You know, when you're a child and growing up, and you know, some want to be firemen, some want to be policemen, but you never hear anyone say, "Oh, I want to be a tax assessor." But I do believe that it was the hand of God that brought me to this point and to serve the citizens and I'm certainly thankful for the opportunity. The Commissioners Court, the previous ones, the present one, they have been wonderful to work with. This is the best county to be a part of and I thank you all of it. Thank you, ladies from the tax office. It's been wonderful. Thank you.
Item number nine, special recognition of personnel by their department head for meeting years of service milestones as follows. First, we have Debbie Gancy of the tax office, being recognized today for serving thirty years with Harden County. Congratulations.
Debbie is receiving this certification of appreciation for thirty years of working for Harden County. Debbie came a little over a year after I came. And she has been an asset to Harden County. And anything you want to know about voter registration, she knows it. I can guarantee you, she has a vast knowledge of voter registration. And I want to say how much I appreciate Debbie today.
Congratulations, Debbie, thank you. Tom Hughes, is Tom in here? Call up Tom. Tom is being recognized today for fifteen years of service to Harden County. We appreciate all you do for Harden County. I know you worked here as a jailer in the past, but how many years was that?
Started actually in ninety-four.
Then you left and came back for?
Left for eight months.
Okay. And now he's our main supervisor. And we appreciate the job that Tom does for Harden County. Thank you, Tom.
Yes, sir.
And last but not least, we have Christine De Mary, juvenile probation department, who's being recognized today for ten years of service. Jared is going to present her with her certificate. And there's no feeling that we're going to say it.
I didn't appreciate all the groaning and moaning. I will say Christine's been here for ten years and I know everybody else was twenty and thirty, but working with me, I'm sure it felt a little bit. Just for her to know that I appreciate her so much, because every time her name was on the schedule, I knew it was going to be an easy, smooth shift. She keeps those people in line, she kept the coworkers in line, which we need help with as well, but she was always there for us, never. We needed her, we called her, she was there. If I had twenty of hers, our retention center would be a smoother operation. I mean, she was a very dedicated, great worker. Person that probably appreciates more than I do is Jody, our current detention supervisor, because she's probably single-handedly responsible for running off the last three, so that's how he got his job. Thank you so much. And December eighteenth, she actually put in enough service for the county to retire. So she is no longer with us, but she's always welcome to come back to volunteer, anytime.
Right. Congratulations.
I want to tell everybody, you're my sugar mama.
I would say it was an honor to work for Harden County. It is a mental, to work with the kids. I know I was not the best. I was loud-mouthed, sorry, but I just.
I was not able to say that.
But my heart was true to make sure these kids understand that what life they're doing now will kind of follow you and straighten up now. It's easier to do it now than later on in life. I had some success and then some just looked at me and laughed and thought I was stupid, hopefully. But the ones, I also work at Walmart. And they come into Walmart and they look at me and they no longer come into our service and they thank me. They say, "You were a hard woman, you believed in rules, but thank you." I'm straight now. And I just had a girl yesterday, or day four yesterday, oh, no, Saturday, come in and she started crying. She said, "Oh, Ms. Christine, thank you." She said, "I see now what you were talking about." So it is an award and I appreciate them letting me work there.
We appreciate you and we thank you for this. Item number ten, introduction of newly hired personnel. We have Ms. Ashley Bear, a new deputy clerk in the tax office. Ashley, welcome to Harden County. And we have Brandon Walcott, Bobby Jackson, and Lee Smith. They are new corrections officers with the sheriff's office and they're all back here. We welcome y'all to Harden County and I know Brandon, there he is. He's, he's not new, but he's not old. He's just back. Welcome back. Thank y'all for working for Harden County and serving the people. Item number eleven, Dana Hogg, district clerk, adoption of resolution number thirty-nine dash sixteen, opposing change to current statutes regarding care, custody, and control of records held by the county and district clerks and any actions that would result in those records being centralized within any other entity. Ms. Hogg sent us some information about this and I forwarded that out to the Commissioners and I have a motion from Commissioner Pelt to adopt the resolution.
A second.
And a second from Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, we're going to let her explain this.
Sure, would y'all like to vote on it and then she can tell us, or you want the information before we vote?
I'd like the information before I vote.
Go ahead, Ms. Hogg. Good morning.
Good morning. There's a lot to explain, but I'll try to put it in a nutshell. Basically, OCA went behind the clerk and the counties unbeknownst to us and made arrangements for our e-file documents. Let me see, their goal is to make the e-file documents available online to the public or whoever wants them. When e-file began, it was just to file, to file with the court. Documents would be kept thirty days and then they would be dumped. Well, they kept them all this time and now they want to control them and be able to sell them. It takes a lot of control out of the county clerk's and the district clerk's hands and it will, in the long run, take money from the county because, you know, we charge for copies and services. And if everyone has access to that online, that will go away. The other thing is, we're very concerned about the sensitive information that should not be put out there. They really haven't explained anything to the clerks as far as how this is going to work, how they would make it work to where, you know, just anybody couldn't log on and get what they want. You know, as far as, there's a lot of things out there that are under non-disclosure orders, expulsion orders. Just a lot of things that shouldn't be out there. And the whole thing in a nutshell is it's taking it away from the clerk's hands. They gave us a lot of information here. I know I can't answer every question there is because it's kind of new. We found out about it accidentally. We had a clerk who, I guess her husband was an attorney because she was at a seminar and he brought back this information and had a whole paper written on it and it was coming in summer of two thousand seventeen. So you can, the concern was, first of all, is why haven't they talked to us? And two, they haven't talked to the counties. Like I said, I probably can't answer every question, but I'll get the answer if you have other questions. There's a lot of information here to read through.
I see in the local government code, one nine one point zero zero eight, that Commissioners Court is tasked with a duty. And is this, is this system that they're wanting to implement taking that authority or subverting that authority of Commissioners Court?
Correct.
And it would also take the custodian of, the custodian of records for the district courts and the county courts or the district clerk and the county clerk. And so that would take that away from them as well. It would be released through this Research Texas rather than having the custodian of records release any information that's requested through public information requests.
Are you aware of any statute that they're standing on to do these procedures?
Oh, sir.
Because I don't see anything in here. I see what Chris says here about the responsibility of this governing body, but I don't see any statute that this, that they can stand on, so.
This is a bill that's coming up in the next legislature, is that right, for consideration?
Yes.
And I have seen through tag that several other counties are doing this same resolution, they're passing this same resolution. The only county close to us that I know has already passed it is Jasper County.
I got some emails last week there. I think Jefferson County is putting it through, or at least has it on the agenda. Numerous counties have sent theirs in. So they're trying to get all two hundred and fifty-four counties, of course, to join in. We just have lots of questions, lots of concerns and, you know, for them to go behind us and do all this without telling us, it's kind of scary. But I think on that next page, it will answer some of your questions about the statutes that they're disregarding. There's a list of them there. I don't know of any statute that they're basing it on that they, that would allow them to do such.
Thank you, Ms. Hogg.
Thank you, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve, Commissioner Chris Kirkendall, precinct two, considering possibly approved request to reappoint Arthur M. Walton and Mike Lyles as Commissioners for Village Mills Emergency Services District.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen, consider and possibly approve request by Mr. Jimmy McKim, chairman of Harden County Historical Commission, to reappoint members for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen term of service for the Harden County Historical Commission pursuant to chapter three eighteen, Texas Local Government Code. We have a list of the members that was submitted by Jimmy McKim and I've moved that we approve the list as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion by the Chair and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen, Misty Sims, purchasing agent, present recommendation from committee concerning qualification statements submitted for engineering services regarding repair replacement of courthouse HVAC system. Good morning, Ms. Sims, how are you?
When we solicited these qualification statements, we scheduled a manual walkthrough of the courthouse. We had three firms show up for that. It was DVR Inc., Streamline Mechanical, and Galuski and Johnson. And that was on November the thirtieth. We opened the qualification statements on December seventh at two P.M. Erica Singletary, myself, and Sarah Gidry were present. And we received statements from Streamline Mechanical and Galuski and Johnson. The evaluation committee was Judge Chris Ingram, Commissioner Kirkendall, and Jared Fountain. And their recommendation is Galuski and Johnson. If Commissioners Court awards based on qualifications, that will allow us to get a proposal and some pricing information.
And is it Galuski and Johnston or Johnson?
It's Johnson.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen, Misty Sims, present recommendation from committee concerning results of proposals received from consultants with regards to applying for the Texas General Land Office CDBG-dr funding for two thousand fifteen floods regarding possible buyouts.
Proposals were opened on December ninth at two P.M. in the purchasing department. Myself, Pat Mitchum, and Erica Singletary were present. They were received from MPTX Associates Inc. and Provision Specialized Resources LLC. The evaluation committee was Commissioner Pelt, Kevin Cummings, and Teresa Wigley. And their recommendation is MPTX Association.
I move that we award the contract to MPTX based upon Harden County's prior experience with them. They'd be in a firm out of Newton, Texas, whereas the other firms out of Louisiana would have to commute and they're, it appears to be favorable price-wise, MPTX. The other firm charges a flat five hundred dollars to prepare the grant application. And if you don't get it, then the county's just out that for MPTX, bear in that cost.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I just want to say again to the sheriff and to I just want to say again to the sheriff and to Shirley, we thank you so much, and we're going to miss you. Y'all are welcome to come back anytime, and hopefully we will still see your smiling faces around the courthouse. Wish you the very best in both your retirements. Thank you very much. Move with adjourned.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. We're adjourned.